Good morning.
Are you sure you didn't get one?
I'll go check.
Peridium Maison Services.
Morning gentlemen.
Morning.
How you doing?
How are you?
I am doing great, how about yourself?
Good.
It was here?
Yeah.
Here's your tickets.
Oh.
Tax purposes.
Thanks sir.
The winner has not picked up their prize yet.
Really?
Has not even corresponded to us. So, I don't know what regulations we should be following. Cause I don't know we definitely, we've never had any money to pick up the prize except for they won. My thought is...
For what?
A diamond ring.
Oh, to charity.
And my thought is that they may be waiting until the first year because it'll be like winner stats.
Oh, that might be.
I've seen that happen before.
Yeah.
Uh, work for Ridge Station, Kansas City.
People, people understand that. You know, that you win something like that, you're gonna be taxed on it.
Oh yeah.
And they don't get it.
About two thirds.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Or six, yeah.
Thirty-five.
Uh huh. Yeah. Price is right. I don't know. Wheel of Fortune.
Uh huh. Well Wheel of Fortune at least should be a cash. Sometimes. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you win the new car.
Yeah. So. Yeah, I know, yeah.
You can make all the plans, spend all the big money and then go realize you got to tax it.
He is stupid. And it might be in a, like you win the million dollars, it might be over so many years. You know, like the, you choose out of the lottery.
Yeah. I mean, it used to be over twenty, I think it's better than now, it's twenty-five.
Actually, I just heard twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
The lottery, someone won 1.2 billion in California.
Yeah, California.
That can be spread over twenty-nine years.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, if you're our age, would you want to spread it over twenty-nine years?
Oh yes, you're gonna pay me every damn dime.
Yeah, well, in some cases though, it does, your errors can appear.
If you, I think that if you claim the prize, you don't have to claim it personally, if you claim the prize as a foundation, corporation...
Hey Christie.
Good morning.
Something like that.
It's chilly.
Yeah. Well, the foundation just bought me a house.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I can see that. I don't know.
No, you're gonna pay me every damn dime.
There you go.
Can't pay my twenty cents anymore?
No.
Well, you know, we're talking about the mega winner out in California.
Yeah. Can you imagine?
Well, you took up the five hundred something million.
Yeah. You know, I can have people...
But that's before taxes.
Is it?
Yes it is.
They're gonna get you, one way or the other.
That's before taxes.
There's cotton coming in and all today.
I think so.
I knew there was something different about you, Keith shaved off your beard.
I did.
You kept your mustache.
I did.
Got tired of it. I'm in this, I can't grow facial hairs. I'm sorry. Yeah, no. Mine just grow a little bit when they have the kind of... Yeah. Yeah, I'm just handing it to you. Okay, I didn't... And this is the resolution on closing that one.
Yes, and you handled that until this week?
Yeah.
Minutes?
No. That's easy.
I think that's it.
Okay. Expenses for K C, I need them to put a last. And then, yeah, I think that was it.
We will add along to the bills, Aaron will have bills for you guys to look up to do too.
Perfect.
As soon as I get that done, then I'm gonna start my transfer.
So, closed out this year, that was it. Are you all caught up with Bob Lamerson? He, every time I say anything.
You have to ask Aaron.
What I told him was most likely when you have an employee from the county that goes in and gets a part, they don't take it directly to the Road and Ridge office and it takes a while for the process. So, that's why I explained to him. It's only if you have to answer.
Only thing I'm gonna tell him is bring him directly to us.
Yeah, he is.
Maybe get an email into us, fax it to us, or walk across the street looking for them.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, you had thirteen?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, back.
There's nothing that says noon, cause I read it and I don't know what happened to it that way.
We're gonna do eight fifteen, so you don't show up at all. Pay to eight fourteen. Okay. Yep, I thought I would, that would be my last day, but it's eight fifteen.
I'm shaking my shoulders.
Eight fifteen on the thirteen.
Eight fifteen on thirteen. What's thirteen?
When's the four again?
Uh, two weeks.
Sorry.
Two weeks.
I could've sworn we were talking about the twenties.
Well, that's the presidential. And congressional, presidential. All that. Yeah, have a nice weekend, long weekend, then head back for one day, then off tomorrow. And then next.
Yep.
Well officially, I will, I will recycle my calendar. There you go.
Morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good. You might get rained on.
We'll be long dead before that.
Okay.
Is this supposed to rain?
Yeah. And if I do, it won't be the first time.
I, did I ask you a fever related to Gary?
Yes, spelled with an I. They're spelled with an I.
But you're not related?
No.
Okay. Cause they were all boil makers.
Yes, Gary's a boil maker.
Gary was my boss in Nebraska City, his dad was a general foreman.
Oh really?
Yeah, I worked up there, they're a college break.
Yeah.
You know, it's cold and wet right down the Missouri River.
Oh yeah.
And that's cold stuff, it blows out in the field. But, I always worked out for simitators, part of the field.
Yeah.
Hello.
Morning. How you doing?
Thank you. Thank you. Christie, did I ask you last week if we sent IP pathways a letter, an official letter that you would know that Tim no longer was...
They know.
They, okay. Can you get metal, metal...
No, I did not.
Solution, can't do it here.
I just wanted to ask for work.
You guys have a good Christmas?
Yes. How about you?
Oh yeah. Kids are all in. Same reason that we put the lady in.
Yeah, I think this...
B over there and then...
I don't know.
That a machine?
You do this.
Miss spelling. What's that supposed to say? Yeah. Funny, that's... See if you got your twenty cents. Do I got it? You got it.
So this is the resolution, this is what you want to do, and then you're gonna have it here.
And, um, still, this will be, so you can add or take away from the list.
Right.
If somebody is confused.
So if somebody says they don't want history, it goes for that reason, but we'll have to take that during the night, not until the time we do it.
Right. Yeah, just pick that up. We can do that then.
You wanna have the during the list?
Think so. For certain reasons, well, yeah.
Okay, I'll check the top. But that's gonna be more, that must be...
I'm assuming to swap it out and, I guess we're gonna swap it out and they... I like the end also. Good morning Dave, how are you?
How are you?
Oh.
Good.
Where are your friends?
No idea.
I think Keith ran them off.
Good for you.
Don't wanna say anything, yeah. Don't worry about it.
Actually, Keith said something too. We, I think it resonated by the way. He, they jumped ahead about something that he countered back.
Well, I think filming, or... I think filming Justin kind of works his work.
Well, they use, in my broadcast log experience, disseminating and copyright infringement on using the music bed on three studios, that they could probably get them permission and or pay for it. That'd be something to look into. So, anyway, just my opinion. I got nine o'clock to roll. I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hire sheriff or...
I will face you.
And, well, now...
But, uh... Morning.
Morning. How are you?
You guys? I, I think something...
Started off with the clean shave.
Just something important about you. Like box where they... Uh, you dragged me up.
What's new?
I wanna be grandpa.
Cool, congratulations.
Send that over to Paul Day. New July.
Very cool. How many grandchildren?
That'll be number two.
Love yourself if you want.
It's from the dog that said she's never had kids.
I'm just gonna ask you that.
Never say that. Hard session, isn't it?
Yes.
How about these? These are promotion...
Yep.
So, Steve this morning?
Yeah.
Remember a lot of what we talked about.
Okay.
All right. Uh, some of the things we covered last week about that trash down on one ten on Hen Road. Spoke to Matt this morning, you forgot about it, so he's gonna take care of it today.
You know, I asked the landowner, they said, what can we do about it? I asked the landowner, I said, put up a deer team on your property. Just watch the road. Their response was, we don't deer hunt, we don't allow people to deer hunt.
Okay, that didn't make much sense, but alright.
So, I'm not sure how, a sign probably is not going to deter someone from throwing trash out the other.
We would deal with that every year.
Is that, is that an area where you have trouble with people dumping?
Not too bad, uh, things like that along the county line, more on the...
She believes it's coming out of Shawnee County because it's a half a mile off Shawnee County line. My other thought was to maybe, I know the sheriff has some cameras. And maybe we would ask him to put one on their property in a tree.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if they have trouble with it there, then yeah, maybe go out and get law enforcement involved and have to start watching it a little bit more.
Haven't been done enough to dump anything with the name of it happening.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Get wind into that.
Yeah. This stuff, I think what she indicated to me was, it was maybe a cooler and it was a washing machine, a couch, that type of thing.
Well, washing machine, there's always serial numbers on the washing machines that, if they were, if they registered it for awarding, there you go.
Yeah. Anyway, so, I mean, if it, if it gets to be more of a problem where they're...
I said it didn't happen too often, but it is...
Well, we can talk to the... It's most likely coming from another county, which we thought was...
Yeah, because we ended up, we hit that one time, we had like thirty tires and somebody dumped down there, also.
There are serial numbers on tires, too.
And he's the man with notes.
I'm just saying.
He's the man with notes.
The, uh, that area we have, two thirty-eight East of T, was completed. The W four, one seventy-eight road, from what I looked at that, they called it about closing it.
Mm-hmm.
About, uh...
What, what, did you find anything that says it's still a road, that it's a minimum maintenance road, is anything?
It is, it's grass.
Oh, I know.
And it's, uh...
But officially, has it, has it ever been anything better?
We didn't find anything on that.
Okay, we're, we're gonna officially close it today.
Okay.
So, if, if we vote on that resolution, we have a resolution to do so, that would mean that someone from Road and Ridge, like, uh, put two posts to the ground and bar war. I wouldn't spend money on a real gate. But, you'd probably have to put a, a small sign on one post saying, this minimum maintenance road is being closed. I, I hate spending one dime on stuff like that because nobody even knows it's a minimum maintenance.
Well, when Matt and I drove out there, we had a call in Texas, this thing was like strolling into a pasture.
It does. Farmer's lane, looks like a lane. So, that individual then who owns that ground on the south side, he can rent his fence up to your post, or our, the county's post, and he can start grazing. That's, they're wanting to put cattle in there, that's what started all that together. And we should probably, out of courtesy, send both landowners, the one on the north and the one on the south, an official letter, letting them know that we have closed that to the public.
Yep, I agree.
Uh, kind of dealing with Chris Gordon, he's called us so many times and talked about...
The Delia, the Delia area?
Yeah.
Okay, he's fire chief together.
He may be on your agenda group sometime.
He is today.
Okay.
But he's to talk about, uh, fire department stuff. Does he have a problem with these roads?
He does.
Okay.
He's wanting, he's running a business down there, he's got a logging business where he cuts wood, he has log carts pulling it out. He's wanting us to come in, well, first he's wanting to block down in all those trees on one twenty-six and K road, which is he could have, but he just didn't have to file it anyway. Uh, down there at one oh two G, at the intersection there, uh, he's wanting us to widen that out so semis can turn and come up through there. Also wanting us to widen the road out in front of his house, so semis can turn to go in there. And I see nothing that we can do for him.
No.
To me, the intersection there is good enough for traffic. If we were to do this for him, we're talking about two extension, possible right away.
We can do it at his, his expense.
Yes.
But I don't think he'll like the, and, and I don't have a problem with having that conversation today with him. I mean, we can't go widen roads and intersections.
Because he owns a lot of business.
Right, to get semis. Is his property zone for a business, you know, of that sort? So, that would be my first question. Be careful what you wish for, you know? Chris is a nice guy, but, I mean, he's a guy that does a great job of fire department. With a situation like this a couple, three years ago, presidents would send, uh, that northeast part of the county, whether gentlemen wanted us to widen it because the semis going in came to a T, we said then, no, we can't, can't have it made for.
We've already looked at it and I made this decision later.
Okay.
Going on for, takes about going on this week, got, uh, well, we got three fuel barrels moved last week. The entrance that we're gonna do the next four and three twenty-six, there's too muddy to get in there to do anything with it last week. Two forty-six, W X, we're gonna do some ditching, again, it's too muddy. Still got the mulch going on, nothing I, then one hundred road, around one hundred. Look, hopefully get in to do some ditching this way, one sixty-two O, uh, sorry Q. And some, uh, sirens in three parts today.
Never know. Or... Are we out actively or have our blade operators actively looking for spots, uh, with the rains and stuff that are just mud holes? that are just mud holes and saying something?
They should all be... Right now, I don't know if we were, we're not all across.
Right, right. So, I, I just hope they're making a list of some of those spots. I've noticed some spots that even with the smallest of rain, like what we got the other day, I think we had ninety cents of an inch change and there was a road that I was on. It was just grease, you know, and it was only for about fifty yards for laughs and then it turned back.
Well, I, I came down one oh six last week too. And uh, you know, we did that work down there from E to G down there. And then when we did K road, they went to the west with that a couple of miles, rocking it. So, we got like a mile or so in between the two and I, why didn't we just go and finish that? And that whole area is done, so that's what I'm gonna talk to them about too.
Yeah.
Um, so I got it except for executive session, I'd like to tell you, you have a personal...
How many minutes?
Five, five minutes.
Hang on.
Yeah, Mark's got the script.
Uh, move to go into executive session for first, the personnel matters, modelize personnel for the period of, how long, six?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, starting at...
Nine thirteen.
Nine thirteen. Uh, reopen this location ten minutes later with Chris and Scott commissioners uh, for the purposes of... Well, job performance. Second.
Good movement, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will, before you leave, I want to talk about this.
Let all our knowledge, you guys got some place?
Yep, um, so, did you get the additional information on the uh, GPS Ramirez? Is that Sam Soro?
Huh? Sam Soro.
Sam Soro? Yeah.
No, I'm not getting any information.
Did you talk to him?
I haven't heard from him.
So, I don't think he wanted to take action?
No, I'm not gonna take action until we get, like I said, he was, he was gonna send us the, it should be another thirty days before we have that. And that was the whole key right there, is getting the, getting the piece of the puzzle, it's gonna say that we've been counting, it's gonna say this is the money, is, is the paper we're working on.
Tell them, tell them.
Okay. So, we'll take one first, so we're still...
Uh, we need to, um, at some point, like, sit down and have a work session where we just go over the budget for twenty-five, where we've never redeveloped that spreadsheet where Roden Bridge knows what they have to spend on all their different accounts. And so, we need to have a work session where we can sit down, go over these, this, and, and on a, how we're going to approach that, so that you know on a daily or weekly basis how much money you have to, to be able to spend on a, on items, yes?
My suggestion is after the fifteenth, after you pay all of your bills, call me and tell me you want a ledger report and I can teach you about it. And I will go down the line item by line item, you can get the long one, and you can get a short one, and the short one will show you the percentage that you spent on each one item. And then you can back that to your signature sheet. And then you can back that to your signature sheet. I think that might be best.
But the percentage only tells you just that, a percentage versus an actual.
But the longer will have the actual on it and it'll show you what income you've actually got that's come in.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be the important piece, and important piece is knowing that you've got the income has already come in through taxes, so that therefore the money is there to spend as opposed to spending it prior to the money coming in. But I think it's, at least it would be important for me to know actual on a weekly basis. So at, on, you're saying it would only be on the first and fifteenth every?
I mean, I can bring you a report whenever because the treasurer's office sends down their daily, we do the daily.
I would think every Friday you would wanna sit down and spend some time and go, okay, here's where we're at on rock tubes, whatever that may be.
Well, if I'm correct, our biggest distribution will be January, is that right? So that'll be when you get the majority of the money, so that'll be a good starting point.
Yeah, so again, I'd like for everybody to be involved in that. So when, when could we set that up to do, when would you like it? So we can have a little work session and just sit down and go over that.
If you know it on the money here, we can go it on a different way.
Okay.
Would you think that would be done?
So we'll wait till Lyndon gets in office and then we'll, we'll sit down and go over that. I think you'll have some input on that and I'd like to hear that. And so after the thirteenth, then we'll do that. We'll just let you know, uh, we'll do it in the afternoon, something like that. Okay.
I'd like to sit down too, you know, pop a pop bar, hold me out scheduled for this coming year.
They definitely go.
Yeah, because didn't we, wasn't it kind of the general consensus that we were gonna back off on projects this year and concentrate more just on roads?
And I think you may have adjusted in the sheet.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
But I think it'd be, that would also be another piece, I think it would be good to have that conversation after the thirteenth. That way Lyndon knows what projects will be for twenty twenty-five, all road work will be project work. So we'll look forward to doing that after, sometime after the thirteenth.
So in the, the, uh, bring the, uh, you know, Matt's gonna pop up, give it back to you, uh.
We talked about changing those, but.
All good?
Yep.
All right, does that have anything else?
I have nothing else.
No, so let the, uh.
They're saying, saying salt words yesterday.
Things, they're all going well with.
You gotta, that's why you put them in now, that way it won't happen. If you didn't do it, it definitely would.
Things are going well with managing and making sure people are doing their jobs and getting out and getting, getting after things.
And you've had a conversation with the leads?
I've had with Matt so far.
Okay.
We're gonna, like I said, we'll probably get this program laid out first, you know, what we're talking about then. And I think part of that is getting figured out what we're gonna do for twenty-five. So they, we present it to them and say, okay, here's the project, here's what we got scheduled for twenty-five. Check it out, I'd like to have that done first.
All right. Don't forget to give me some love out on Zero.
Zero.
Zero. What one of the farms is that?
No.
No, that's a really good road. Well maintained. Um, yeah, anything else we can add still, so.
All right, great, great week.
Thank you. And we'll let you know what.
On the other situation.
On the other situation. After we talk.
Sorry, about Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, Resolution of Jack's County, Resolution of the Jack County, which was one seven eight road between W four, road and X road to public travel to preserve public safety. So you wanna make a motion if you're, you wanna read it, the entire thing if you can?
I saw it, I read it.
I read the one.
Okay, yeah, I don't even sign it. So it's been moved?
Okay.
And seconded? All in favor, say aye.
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 All in the same.
It was submitted and I read it.
From Todd. Very good.
Thank you.
So he's very startling. So he's someone she was. Not right. I'm just trying to stay on pace with him.
No, I thought, I thought that's what it was.
Well, that's why I'm asking, he says she's in that pay range, but Darlene is a department head, you cited, correct?
Correct.
So. But I thought she was a department head, so she's not in that package. I'll double check.
Yeah, double check on that because I was curious about that when we.
I saw that, yeah, yeah.
So check on that and see what you got. I was gonna ask you after.
Next thing I got is a letter from you guys to sign, Judge Elder, just letting him know that we don't have the money to increase her wages for twenty twenty-five. What would be the best approach to put this on the reminder?
Do you have any book?
Do you have any books? Okay, there you go. We'll send that to the judge and go to Mary. Just to give you a heads up, I think Chris and Pat, Chris called me this morning. There, I guess, used to be a firefighter of the year awarded in a banquet. I don't know anything about it, but you're familiar with it, Christie, so basically Chris wanted, it happened prior, it used to happen prior to COVID, so that's been what, four, over four years ago. He would like to reestablish that tradition. And basically names are submitted by all fire departments with why, reasons why, and the commissioners would, would determine who that individual would be. I don't know who's funding though, the dinner or anything like that. That's what used to happen.
Captain.
Yeah.
Mislaneus.
So we can, we can have that conversation with you today, just maybe a heads up, that's what. Oh, and I think it's a, it would be a good practice, I don't know where we would have it, oh, wait a minute, our new community building got a banner.
There you go. Well, speaking of firefighters, I did see in the full recorder that Whitey got a grant, I believe it was, or a bunker gear that they were trying to get, so.
Well, good for them.
Yeah.
Basically.
Well, that's a change, yeah, nice change of stuff there.
So again, I think it would be a good, good thing if we can reestablish that.
If we've taken that, that'd be great.
Do we have any rules on it or anything like that? Because I don't want somebody just to submit a name without, I think, a few paragraphs and say this individual is done so that we can have some way of judging.
Yeah, there's got to be some kind of a, there's have, yeah, there has to be some kind of rules or some kind of guidelines that.
Guidelines for the rules, I mean, I just, you know, if you're gonna submit John Smith's name, I wanna know what has John Smith done over the last year.
Not because he drove the truck, dude.
Correct.
Or well, he drove the truck a lot.
Right. Typically, he's gone above and beyond.
Everything looked out.
To do something. That would establish him.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I have no problem with that, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. And the county fund?
That's what it was in science.
Yeah.
But, you know, which county funders, that miscellaneous, and perhaps I seen a reason off that he had burned that by.
Do you think the commissioner should be at the awards banquet then? I agree, I think they should. Or they should, but one of the commissioners should be the one.
Painting.
There you go.
Yep.
I think that's a good idea, too. That way it takes the, takes it off the whole fire cheese.
I'm going to step out for a minute. Can't fund you?
She just got back from a week's vacation, so.
Right, okay, so.
That's what it's like.
Yeah, that's what it's like. Yes, and that's the negative, everything that's negative. So what we do have, positive. For thousand, here, under, rest. That's a twelve thirty-one. Hundred forty-five, there's going to cover, period five, yeah. That was twelve point three.
Yeah, but you think that will be, we're trying to do all the ones in, we're passing the can.
Okay.
Some of them are probably.
Okay, so these numbers are all off the budget. That, well, that's okay, I don't, don't waste paper, I just, I just.
But yeah, you're reading.
Okay. What are we looking at?
Bills.
So bills.
Hey, are you? So do you think I'm.
So this one's a two, one percent. That's one, so it's in.
This will finish now, this one, two, in the front, Friday, I understand. At. No, so. Let me ask you, all the.
That way to win sneak up or not?
All those things. So I have to, it's still pending. I don't think we're to work with just those items.
My ear may just want to.
What would be the benefit?
It will take some.
Okay, so people, so the short one would maybe have six.
I'll bet she's been in wars since she left, you know, the area from scratch, but I'll bet it's very.
This really is?
But, yeah, I'm, because I've been watching, I figured, you know, we'll take it all together. But I think it's kind of odd, it hasn't, nothing has, you know, this, it hasn't been. If everyone do the service.
Short, which line would have? Under road machine.
I'll keep an eye on it. I know.
All right.
I know.
That'd be great. Roads way, uh, need it, but I mean, because that's gonna change. Okay, thank you. I think it would be good to have that conversation so that everybody's on the same page. That's.
I get this.
I guess we throw a bill some time. No, I can throw it that far.
Didn't.
And. Okay. I guess what I'm saying is we're not having any trouble getting applications.
We're not having trouble getting applications, got planning to choose from, because you know, he's got the sign back up and everything now, so.
We could ask, I, I think.
If, if we're, if he's not getting good applications, if he's not getting applications at all, then I think it'd probably be a good idea to continue that. So let, yeah, let's bring that up to him and ask him if, what he's, what his application pool looks like.
Yes.
You have the.
No, yeah, no, he had, he told me he got one.
Planning Commission, new, back, rules, rules and regulations. They're not gonna come down to ten. Do you have the new rules and regulations for the planning commission? Has that been submitted? Do you have that? I have email. Okay, that's all I have too. With Scott Burner. Did you bring that? No, I didn't know if we're working on that today or not. Because it says in twenty twenty-four.
All right, I got a dumb question. Under, uh, Sheriff's, and I think it would be. Department of Detention.
Mm-hmm.
What is advanced corrections healthcare, corrections prisoner medical coaching?
Oh, because they took that guy from that company, so we, they had some more.
Oh, okay, all right. Trying to figure out if they're poaching the game or not, okay, all right, that, okay, thank you.
Good question. How far over is Amy gonna be at the court? Do you?
Sixty-four thousand.
And she has to the fifteenth to submit everything for twenty-four.
But I'm not gonna do prior year, so anything that comes out of twenty-five is twenty-five.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I don't.
As of tomorrow will be the last?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
And you think it's gonna be in that range of sixty?
Sixty-three to sixty-five.
Okay. Would you be able to run, run for once, but at least me, uh, the miscellaneous and commissioners, um, and the, uh, always have a lot of work, what the, uh, emergency fund, that's what we call it. Risk management.
Risk management.
Thank you.
So, just the two of?
Three. What do you think the reason is?
Well, you want the commissioners to count this like this, yeah.
Risk management. Why do you think the reason is that the court is so far over? I, I know C is one, but that was, that was a ten house.
It's all the, all the bills, because she wanted everybody to get them again, but she wasn't doing it, so.
Well, that one sink was like ten, almost ten grand.
Yeah, and then we had another one.
Oh, another sink. Dan, didn't you say that you thought possibly, um, the new attorney will be down to maybe ask for a pay raise and, um? I, I had heard grumblings that knew a county attorney was. Yeah, I don't know that they're grumbling, because I don't, I love it. Okay, okay. Just an opportunity. Yeah. Because that's my impression, that she's gonna ask for a pay raise for both her and for assistance. Right. And that would be, uh, we would be able to use the money that we were gonna pay Kevin Hill. Fifty-something thousand. Now, I, grumbling is probably not the right word. I'm gonna take my word for it.
So, so can I jump in?
Hello? Grumblings, grumblings is not the correct statement.
Well, I would say.
Inquire. Inquire.
There's not much, so if she wants that, she needs to raise more.
Right. Can we get a Christmas?
Okay.
Good.
Yes.
You're still upright and motivated, so must be good.
Yeah.
You're still upright and motivated, so must be good.
And surviving.
I started filming with Chris when I was in Ontario. That, that trip to California really.
Oh, did you go?
Yeah, we left last Friday, came back. And enough time to drive home and look in Florida, change for different services and make it through church. We've still been, like, late in the year.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
Oh.
You were on America, were you?
No, Southwest.
Because they had that shut down for an hour, what was it, Christmas Eve morning? And it just totally blew everything for the whole day. They said it was like over a thousand flights canceled because of that, and, and they never really said why. It was a problem, some kind of technical issue.
Oh, see, we had, um, we were flying into Ontario, which is California, and it has so much fog. On the Friday, we were flying, and we were delayed about eight hours.
Yeah.
Two hours we're sitting on the plane on the dark night, waiting for.
Oh, I see. It is, it is where it delayed four hours flying from Corpus to Dallas, Tulsa. So, she doesn't want.
So, is she that, or is she at the park?
I thought we decided she was in the park today.
We did, you can erase that up to be at the park and head up the same case she was.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Pat is on the same scale. We might revisit that.
He has it on his? His bank account on the far end is there, but you guys need to decide what she is.
I thought we decided she was in the park today.
I do, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
So, the county attorney called me, I had coffee with her last week.
Yeah.
She wanted to meet up, and so we had coffee and stuff, she wanted to know what my expectations were, and I said, I'm new like you, and I said, you know, you're elected official, so I could kind of give you your thing. I said, the one thing I would say probably as a commissioner would say to you is, you know, you need to work within your budget. You know, stay within your budget, and she said, Amy has given me the budget, and she said, I think I could work within that budget without any problem.
Right, and that's, that was.
That was the impression I got this morning.
Is, is what she had said, you know, she did talk about having interns to work Monday court cases, but, you know, she thought, her thing was, she thought she could stay within her budget. That was our conversation, we just had, we had coffee just to meet and.
Same thing, that's what we did, and, yeah, I, I think, what? There could be some money available within her budget. Well, we'll have to look at it, because I don't know if we budgeted for Kevin Hill for twenty twenty-five.
No.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we did, and that was clear back. That was clear back then, yeah, I think.
Sure, I didn't think it did. So, I think because she's picking up all the same cases, and we don't have to have him, um, there may be some money available for immediate raises, if that's what she chooses to do, if the money's within her budget, so. I said, I didn't have a problem with that, uh, but it would take a, you know. Well, Amy's probably due for her raise. Hi, guys.
Hi, guys, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good, I'm waiting on Chris.
Chris, get here.
He's usually pretty prompt, but.
He'll be here. What's that? She reached out to you.
She's a girl.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I was just gonna tell her.
So, you came early.
Yeah. I met her some thirty-something years, I was in here.
Okay, Mary said to Kevin Hill, she landed, she was part-time, and we just don't have money there.
Right. So, we did budget for the time, I didn't think we did.
Yeah, we didn't do that, I think we were doing the budget, what?
Yeah, what, what? So, that's been fifty-seven.
No.
No.
And at fifty-seven?
Forty-nine thousand.
Oh, yeah, but he has to pay. So, there's some flexibility there. Do you have to pay capers, because Capers came back and stated.
Well, I'm not looking at benefits, because I'm gonna have his benefits just now.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Looks like there's gonna be some money. Do you want to wait till Chris gets here, Pat, or?
I just texted him, he's usually very prompt.
Yeah, if you want to wait, we're flexible.
I'll see if he answers you back.
We'll continue doing bills.
If he answers you back, tell him you'll text and drive.
Next, uh, what could we give him, the point four percent, easily, got a little bit of money back in on that, we'll carry over. That should be pretty big. February, March. It's on the twenty-fifth, this one, everybody asking to submit their, or we did, their sales stats from that summer.
Yeah.
I contribute. Or I should say, my wife, not a foster daughter.
Oh, to buy a new vehicle.
She did? Yeah, she, we did.
Yeah.
What'd you get? She bought her a Bronco.
Oh, yeah.
You like that? Yeah.
I like that. I just need to get into the new Bronco.
She was cheating. Has never been excited about a vehicle, and she was super excited.
Oh, that's good.
She wanted something with all-wheel drive. And big enough to get a grandchild in the backseat.
That's important.
That's important. And I recognize that, Chrissy.
That's scary.
That's why I just said, sure, honey.
That's why you're playing that three car seat in the backseat.
Yeah.
Yep. Dude, how did we make it through all those years without car seats?
I don't know.
Laying on the back window, laying on the floor.
Why your folks while they were running?
Yeah.
They were raining.
All right, that's the shit, hey, we're still alive.
Sitting like that, not holding a beer.
There you go, it used to be able to have open containers, back in what, sixty, maybe? Yeah, pretty late, sixty, maybe early seventy.
Maybe.
Which is.
So, there's Rob, um, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, so you, we'll have conversations going on. Hello? Hey, how are you? Uh, we're in our meeting, but would you mind if I put you on speaker so that, uh, the other guys can hear? Okay, hang on. All right, you're on, on speaker.
For Rob.
Rob. So. Yeah, and Linda, Linda takes office next month, in two weeks. Till the thirteenth, she'll be sworn in or sworn out, one of the two. Uh, so, anyway, but she's in the room, if you want to come up, you can listen, this is Rob Artwell, our lobbyist from Washington DC. From Virginia. Yeah. I know, that's important, Rob. So, go ahead, Linda's up here, so, uh, go ahead.
Yes. Um, which are, we're actually pretty good at, they just sit down, and it is, I draw on my consulting team. Well, a former Trump administration assistant secretary for transportation. And he handled, he's the assistant secretary for legislative affairs, and he worked with all the members in the transportation committees and corporations. And, um, and just, I mean, I said, where can I help, and he thought, because you're one priority, US seventy-five in Kansas. And what I wanted to do was find out, yes, you know, I mean, right now, I'm waiting for, for, uh, then we come back. You know, it's starting on the third, and then, let's say, actually, it's only starting, you know, inauguration. So, I've heard about a lot of, almost about the Trump, a lot of money for, you know, for law students, Jackson County. And, um, since you have the highest transportation project in Kansas, and you, and who, you to ask, um, you know, your state legislature, I put legislation in, and legislators, I think you already started the process.
Wow.
What do they need to get money from, and does it not need anything from Washington? Um, because, you know, Senator Marson is on that transportation, uh, subcommittee, the chair of it.
Okay.
How it's reorganized, you know, the magnification of community assets, it's unbelievable.
So, so just, I'm gonna interrupt you just for a minute, Rob. Um, so maybe what we could do is have, uh, Mark could reach out to the head of KDOT through an email and just say, look, we don't want to step on your toes, but would it be beneficial if our lobbyists asked for some of this money to help fund this project slated for twenty-nine or thirty, the twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty? Uh, just to make sure that we're not stepping on his toes.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, perfect.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay.
It could be money for that design.
Okay.
It could be money for purchasing some lines and lasers that they need here, and it would just, something small, you know, to essentially get from Washington by, uh,
Yeah.
Getting money, starting to flow in the project.
Yeah, and Sean Wilcox, uh, representative who was in last week, um, was on board with, you know, watching it, helping support it, making sure that this, this happens, you know, doing anything he can, so. Uh, but, yeah, I think Mark reached out.
Yeah, I'll reach out to, uh, Mr. Reed and Secretary Reed and, uh, see if I can get something back from him. I'm also gonna reach out to the engineer on the project, uh, well, he's not the lead engineer, but he's the district engineer, and, uh, see what we got going there, and, because we want to be sure to keep, keep it to the front burner, so that it doesn't get pushed back, so.
Okay, good, good, yeah, just, uh, politely remind her that, you know, it's very tough, tough issue and highway issue for the future, and we're watching, just, you know, you to help them get what's law.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So, do you, do you want to bring Linda up to speed on, on where we are on the, uh, proposed legislation for January?
Yeah, so Senator, Senator Marshall, um, and we're working with a staff for the national experience right now. And Bill Percy, the staff member that was working with us on that, oh, had drafted legislation. We went back and said, well, this is how we would do it, so we drafted legislation to include Jackson County and paying the blue taxes, which usually goes to, you know, to Department of Interior plans, um, that's, uh, you know, where local governments have received any revenue from, and they're, you know, they're basically, uh, tax loss, you know, on books. No revenue coming in to cover, you know, all this open space, almost there. Well, Jackson County, um, we got the numbers, you know, established very hard. There's some numbers on how much tax revenue is being lost because of the law, I mean, um, casino and business activities that they have, so, and tires, and, uh, also, um, we put out the document, Jackson County's providing some special services, um, including, you know, policing, and, you know, courthouse, and those taxes are very expensive. Um, so, it turned out that Jackson County, thirty percent of its budget, basically, um, was lost, it houses, it serves, and, uh, and, you know, for, basically, in any county, states, that, uh, it was destroyed because of the American impact on county revenue taxes. That it exceeds seventy percent of, um, of the county's budget, that we helped draw us, we paid it with the taxes, and we, of course, paid it with the taxes, so, pilot, which is, uh, we done it on the Department of Interior, and, um, so, especially, especially, and, so we have a section that's number out there, uh, and these most areas that you're going to do that concession, you know, they did, you know, back then, and then, you know, to, uh, until they were, so, Jackson County, which is one of my, uh, Tracy, and, and then that general, and stuff, and just see if that can be, or, or support the legislation. And then, we're working through, you know, committees that, you know, referred to, and then, if you get a pass this year, uh, they'll be, they'll be allowing it before September, and then, and then, like, right, and, uh, but, uh, you know, the, so, it also announces in conclusion, we're ever coming, really, really, so, all the sources.
That's good, yeah, it's gonna be huge.
And, and will you try to recruit, uh, some Democratic supporters? Yeah. That's, that was, that was the, where I was heading, that was. Perfect. I think it's important.
It's, it's very, you know, if you were using other, you know, so, you know, getting, uh, that's, is very important, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, I think Sheree Davis would probably be a supporter of this, uh, because I, I just think that once she understands what we're asking, and it's, it's really nothing more than, than, uh, to replace lost revenues.
Do you think, um, Rob, it would be beneficial if, if Mark reached out either through as a commissioner or in conjunction with the Jackson County Democratic Party? Um, to just say, hey, uh, I want you to know that this is a bipartisan bill that's coming up, start to look for it, is, do you think there's some benefit in that?
Yeah, I don't think so, especially, you know, if, if you know the congressman, and you give her support, that'd be great, and I'll, I'll be on your team.
Yeah, I, I've met her before, talked to her, so I will, I will reach out to her and see what we do.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the things, and, because Bill's friend in the state senate, he was a lead ballot, is, I think, and, and, uh, he shared the information about what how, I mean, we're trying to, they're just like, um, and, so, the background of that.
Good.
Yeah, she said, she stands with us, she's for us, um, she's very concerned, um, that they were trying to make it around without consulting the state.
Which was eliminating.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, perfect.
And, 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 uh,
Amanda, yes, you're, you're right.
I mean, this serious thing is, you're basically saying, you know, Bill, we're staying on, there's a fire trying to land, so, when you got a huge recinto there, and you're, um, it was just a huge extension, and you go, uh, and cartels, okay, it was, and you're guys cry.
Yes.
And, uh, the, uh, that was just the area that we need to, uh, I didn't know, in the street.
Yeah, right. Okay.
So, that's, uh, that's my report for January.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you're having really good weather. Well, it sounds like you're having really good weather.
Oh, yeah, I thought we aren't, it's, it's fine here today. Um, and that project is going, you know, I'm always working.
Well, enjoy, enjoy the New Years and, uh, we'll look forward to hearing from you soon. And Mark, I'll have Mark just email you whatever he finds out with the secretary.
Okay, sir, it's good.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob, Happy New Years.
Thank you. Okay, sorry for the late phone call, we needed to take when it came in. Come on up. How are you guys?
Good, how are you, Jeff?
Good, seems like I just talked to you. Is that your new radio?
No, this is my old.
Oh, that's your old, okay. But the new one, you did tell me the new ones have the ability to, they record, you can push the button and you can, I was telling a guy that, former KBI officer, he goes, really? Radio, do that? He goes, hey, that'd be really beneficial.
Maybe with the camp here, right?
Right. Or you're in the middle of something and you wanna hear, so. Anyway, um, I kind of shared with the, the group here this morning, kind of what you guys were up here for, but walk us through, 'cause I don't think any of us are familiar with this.
Probably on, it's, probably, it's been probably five, six, seven years ago that the fire members kind of wanted to know if the commissioners would be doing an award for a member on all of our fire departments.
Which would include eight?
Yes, it would be.
Including seven?
Seven, not, not tribe.
Seven, I'm sorry. Eight, including the tribe, so it'd just be Holden and the eight volunteers.
We could, but it's, you know.
I guess we did include tribe, tribe's a big part of what we do.
Well, you guys think, may work cooperatively with you all, especially, yeah, I, I don't think it's a bad thing.
But usually the fire chiefs pick out one person on their department, and they write up a little essay on why they think this person deserves an award. And then they get them to me, and then I bring them down, and the commissioners review them, and you pick who you think should get this award.
Yeah, that, that's great, that they have an essay of at least some description.
They need to have a few paragraphs on there.
Okay, so is, what's the guidelines for, is there guidelines? I mean, you don't, you don't want somebody coming in and say, well, you drove the truck for a while?
No, they need, you know, they run, and they do what they're supposed to do on scene. I mean, it's, it's basically, they're trying to pinpoint on this notion because they're doing such good.
Sure.
Tribes, all their officers or their, uh, firemen, they're paid, correct? They're not volunteers? There's the difference, so I, I would really like to hold this to a, to a volunteer.
I'd like to go with all volunteers.
And I think that's what we have done in the past, but, and then COVID hit, and we haven't done it in two years.
So it'd be all, all the Jackson County funded volunteer fire departments?
Yeah, and then the commissioners would get a mail purchase, which we ordered from Boomers on the last one, and I think it was like three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, we know how many people are gonna show up.
Yeah.
And we can use our new Banner Creek, um, facility to host it out there. We know a guy that we can probably get a good deal on. So, thoughts?
I, I think it's a good idea, I think I'd like to see this brought back. Um, anything that we can do to honor our volunteer fire departments, I think it'd be a good thing.
And then we would be available to be there?
Yes.
You want us to hand the award out?
And you, and you read what the fire chief had put on the plaque or on the form.
Yeah, right, I think that'd be cool.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be great.
We used to do that at the end of the year, and it takes me a couple of weeks to get the plaque made. So once you get the reviews in, we have a week to get that or put the name on the plaque.
So what would the timeline be?
November, December?
The last one we did early December, but we can do it mid-November, whatever, when it takes.
Well, I'm wondering, I'm wondering about the timeline for the fire chiefs to get their nominations.
I usually set those out about three months in advance.
Okay.
Because everybody's busy, and I'm volunteer, and I say, okay, I need these back by this day. And some of them don't fill it out.
So you would take the responsibility of doing that, perfect, you can get us a list.
And I'll just give you, sort of turn in, and you review them, and if you have any questions, you can ask me about them.
So, why don't you give us some time to check, and we'll look at the schedule, and then we'll pick a date, preferably, probably a weekend?
We usually did them during the week.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, that would be even better, so Wednesday nights? Typically, there's not anything going on at schools or school events, so we can check with her. We can go ahead and get that on the books and get it planned.
It's just something good for the, the volunteer guys.
It's good for them.
You take one guy and we can feel good.
Thanks, great.
No, and I, I think, like I said, I think anything we can do to, to honor our, our volunteers, uh, our volunteer fire departments is a great thing to do, so I'm, I'm.
And I think one year, the commissioners picked two people because of what they have in the paper, and they couldn't bring one out, so why not pick two planks?
Sure.
I don't mind picking the two planks, if you guys make a decision either way. One plaque is what we usually went with, but it's something that you can like.
Great.
We will do that.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, volunteer's the key word, heard that.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a note of your real quick, but it's just me.
When are they all determined to happen? We usually would get them probably in August or September. And then if they're not, the commissioner's gonna let them have the kind of review or whatever, and then it's like, whatever, we take, we just. And that's why I usually get it over first, because I, you know, but I'll send that out and ask the, you know, the fire chief and say, yes, we will, and we've got some fire chiefs that probably don't have it, we get them in.
I think the sooner we get it on the books and they know, they can plan. So we'll talk to Kurt, and we'll see late November, early December, what works in there.
Or if, if October works for you too, that's fine too.
Well, and I was just gonna say, probably, I would almost go for the month of November sometime. Reason being is you get towards the end, you got Thanksgiving, and then people are going into Christmas parties and Christmas things, so maybe we oughta make it towards the first of November, I would think.
That's fine.
That would be good too.
That way, it, it takes a little pressure off everybody trying to get to it. Just so long as you leave yourself enough time to get the, get the nomination in.
And if, if I don't get it from one of the fire chiefs, I make a phone call and say, hey, do you not have somebody in the department, you know, write something up for me, get somebody by this day? There's been a few departments that have not got anything, and that's.
Yeah, and they may not have anybody that's, they feel like, you know. All right, sounds good.
Sounds good, I'm, I'll check up on the data for you.
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
First time we're talking last week, are there any things on the solar thing, or are you waiting on that?
Regulation was, we just finished up regulation there, it's gone to zoning and planning, so it involves that part. They'll handle it from here, and they'll ask, if they, if they have suggestions or changes, they'll kick it back to us, and that's how the process will work. People wanna lobby for or against, or, 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 I said they go with the zoning and planning.
Is there, is there anybody watching what we need for the fire departments?
Yeah, resiliency program, that should be in place, where we've all talked about, where training, special equipment, you know, things like that, and now that was recommended.
That's not something that we have done, though.
No, that's something that's recommended by a engineer who deals with this, who presented it to us through me. That resiliency program that will identify down the road, the training, the equipment, et cetera, et cetera.
We're not gonna be the ones to do, I'm not gonna, it's gonna be up to the, you to determine what you need, and then present that to us. The only thing we'll be able to do is if this process happens, if the zoning goes through, then there'll be, um, an active conversation between whatever company is wanting to come in about a payment of blue taxes or a donation. That's where that money would be come from to fund whatever you need. I just wanted to make sure that people weren't thinking we were gonna come up with these.
No, no, no.
Yeah, that's, it's a bucket, another bucket.
So that, that would be so.
All being one bucket.
You two would probably get together home and start, you know, looking at what you would need, how you would need to do, and so on and so forth.
Is there somebody that you can help with that? Cause I don't rely, I mean, you can read the internet, you can research, you can.
I would, I would rely on your, your, your state fire marshal, uh, or other counties. There are several counties across the state, just the state of Kansas, that already have large scale solar up and running, or in the process.
You know which counties?
Uh, I guess one, Johnson, that's, Kingman County, I'm not sure about Sedgwick.
Stanton County right now?
And they've been operating for a while, or they're new into?
They're all gonna be fairly new into it, but then they would have information on what they're, at least be able to put you in contact with fire departments.
Stanton County started operation in twenty twenty?
Um, Stanton? I would choose a fire marshal, see if they have some, um, thoughts on what you're gonna need.
I asked them, and she didn't have anything, she let me know if she found somebody to do. And I asked the fire chief's conference, and none of the fire chiefs told me.
There's also one in Ford County that starts scheduled to be given instruction in twenty twenty-five.
That's, that's, I guess if I were looking at it from a fire situation, you could find out what the materials are made of and what you would need to fight that fire.
Well, now, one thing, one thing you have to understand too is, uh, in our regulations, uh, that we set over, there will be no battery storage on site, and it will all be burgers going straight to wine.
So we won't have to provide any of the batteries?
Nope, that's correct.
Nope.
No batteries.
It's just gonna be metal.
Uh, glass, metal, aluminum, as believed, they have some silver, so.
Um, I think a lot of this will come out in meetings of theirs too, and you'll have contacts through the zoning and planning meetings of, uh, children, company that is going to, that ends up being Nexter. You can reach out to them, they, they're gonna have to provide a materials list of what is involved. This isn't their first one. Um, I can put you in contact with Mentana Island, they have, uh, of, of large scale, and Nexter is the one that built theirs. Um, you can talk to their volunteers out in the middle of the country, just like, you know, what this is proposed, so you can reach out to them. The other things, though, it's not necessarily just fighting a fire, what you would need, that's a piece of it, but what are you going to need as far as larger equipment, bigger building, those types of things? You know, if, if I were in your shoes and I was looking at this, I would be trying to figure out, I have a grass fire, what do I need for, to put out a grass fire? To prevent something that's gonna be potentially a chem fire. And so I'd be looking at equipment. You may, you may determine that you're gonna need somebody full-time there twenty-four, seven, eight, and individually, I don't know. Um, you may need a bigger building. I would envision you're gonna need a bigger building, you're gonna be, need, for sure, respirators, and you may have, may, may or may not already have that, but those types of things to prevent, and because grass fires are gonna be your biggest thing, and then those could catch, you know, I don't know what these panels, you know, would, catch on fire, how that works. Um, but grass fires, what are you gonna need if there's a large grass fire? We'll say north of, or south of, or west of, when, how do you put that out before it gets to something like that? That type of thing.
That was one of the biggest discussions we had at the last fire meeting a couple of weeks ago, is if we do end up with the, the farm involved, what kind of hazmat? And, cause we, as a county, we, we have a very small amount of hazmat materials out available.
Right, so you would need different staff?
Yeah, and I was just curious if anybody, make sure somebody's pleased thinking of that.
Yeah, we're, like I said, we're, we're thinking of that, and that was one of the reasons that, that number one out there, starting with, you know, batteries on site, and then whatsoever. That's the biggest key right there, otherwise you're just lighting the fire, yeah.
But, but that, to me, will be your responsibility to maybe come to some of those meetings and some of your other, in, in, engage in a conversation with whoever is proposing or asking for a certain use permit? I need to see prior to the happening, um, who, uh, what are these made of, and what does it take to fight them? They're going to be able to give you the information, because it's beneficial to them that they have a fire department that can handle whatever comes up.
It's better than sitting on the watch.
And, and that may be, Chris, for you, um, being probably the number one down there, is go to one or, you know, the first or second, or whenever they have the first public meeting at zoning and planning, and say, hey, this is who I am, this is all I'm asking, is there information out there? And, um, can you get that information or put in contacts with the right, and more likely it's gonna be putting the contact right in the difference to give you a list of what those are.
Okay, and that all happens, is zoning implemented?
That all happens across the line.
Do they meet every three months?
No, they're, they're meeting as needed, but every month they've been meeting.
And there will be, there will be more meetings for work sessions, and everything will get activated and familiarized with what was said across the.
But they may not have public comment on zoning, or on regulations for two months, three months, I don't know, that's up to them, but once they start having public comments, then that's when you can go.
And how do I find this to happen?
They publish in the home report, you get them to.
I believe that you could probably go upstairs and ask Kate if you put on the list and be notified of when their meeting is.
Yeah, she'd just send you an email?
Yeah.
You can do that today, if she, if she's, one of her staff can do that for you.
I just don't wanna get a web app.
Right.
No, 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 no.
And the funding behind that, um, and we negotiate with whatever company it is for a donation, and so, you know, that first, that's gonna be a large one, because we need grand thousand dollar equipment, you know, I don't, you know, just need the number, um, but there are also other things, you know, we have, it has been brought to me, because I represent that area, that the city of Dillia needs, even water by no means. That's also something that needs looked at, that could be paid out of that donation, you know, on a more time basis to improve that, because you gotta have good water in the city, um, those types of things, so.
It's always something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, um, is that everything you guys had then? Okay, I'm gonna walk out with Chris and walk upstairs with him, and then I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yep. You guys have had a good year.
Me too. Almost here.
I think this, 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 Next Monday, we're going to get a building.
I know, yes.
Eight o'clock, and then there's breakfast at eight thirty.
Breakfast is until early.
Sixteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. So, cut the ribbon and come right back here. Eighteenth is on a Saturday. Sure, something. Sixteen?
This is Saturday morning, sixteen.
Say, uh, it is sixteen, eighteen.
What's a Saturday?
Eighteen.
At breakfast? Yeah. Let's say eighteen.
At eight thirty?
Yeah.
So where, where on here are the department heads?
All right.
But how, how do we determine? What department head's up?
Well, I'm assuming superintendent.
So then she, you're saying she has been topped out, that's it, right?
But is she a department head or is she a superintendent?
Well, I thought we determined she was a department head. Yeah. So does the wording change on here?
Well, you know, let her run but for other department heads.
Well, that, that's what I'm wondering, where, where is the, how do we determine that department heads pay? That's what I'm asking. Because I don't see that on here anywhere, so I didn't know if there was guidelines for how that is paid. What's that like?
I don't think we have anything working down like department heads or anything, we just have a. I think we just have the payroll.
I guess, I think that's what we're going to be determining first.
I mean, she'll be making more than some department heads.
Does it stand here twice? Environmental Services Superintendent on the first page and Environmental Superintendent Special, or Environmental Superintendent on the second page, you have two different scales. So. We need to get that figured out, because like I said, I, I could have sworn.
Well, I know that we put her and Pat as same, right?
Yes.
You guys decided she was a department head and she was making more than that.
Can we raise Pat up?
Right.
So what's his title? Department head?
And how do we, so, I guess that's what we're asking, is your pay, pay rate or pay scale for department heads?
I guess I don't understand that, to me, if Scott was a department head over the departments, okay?
Yes.
Public Works Director overall.
Public Works Director, what is?
Yeah, I, that's.
Which is a department head. When you have a, a building department head and you have offices that have a department head. And Scott would be the department head over, I'm assuming, all of the ones he sees.
I don't think she's.
We need to get an answer. So if he's not, will he come in?
I didn't think, I.
Wait, when did he have four?
Today. At nine.
Oh, maybe we said not going in. But we still need, I, I'll answer on that. So we need, we're going to need Colin when there's that session.
On the, uh, resolution? Yeah, something else?
We talked about this.
Okay. Um, but he also has a resolution too, the twenty-four.
That's what we was asking for the.
No.
I have to fix that.
That was a closing, this resolution.
And I didn't realize there was a hearing, because we were too long.
Oh, there is a hearing.
I, I didn't think there was, because I thought, we need to have.
Yes, since we're here on that resolution.
I thought his, I thought his email said there wasn't.
No, his, his email said there was not.
Well, yeah, no, that is on your roadblock.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, you're right, resolution, there's no public hearing for a roadblock.
Right, this is a different, this is a different payment, that's right.
Right, that we declared all the roads. We haven't had a public hearing on.
We need to figure out and get this pay thing straightened out too.
With Scott?
Yeah.
Call him.
Well, I mean, as far as, I had thought that we had said that she was a department head and has a department head. And we raised him up the same, so if she's a department head, then she's not the Environmental Services Superintendent because there's, there's two different pay scales on there, Environmental Super, Services Superintendent.
She's a superintendent.
But I thought we had determined that she is a department head, same as Pat.
Is there definition there?
That's what I, and that's what I was asking, I don't know that there is. But I thought we had determined that earlier.
What's the difference between a department head and a superintendent, I mean?
Well, department, the department head, when we raise Pat up to that scale, both of them are department heads.
Pat.
Pat Richard, yeah, okay, or Pat.
Okay, I, we got two.
We got two. I thought that we had determined that those, the department heads would stay about the same rate, correct? Is that what we had, I thought that's what we had determined.
Well, that's, that's when we raised Pat, we raised Pat up because you identified that he, isn't he a department head?
Yes.
And we said, yes, he is, well, he should be at that level, of which we raised him up to that level first part of last year. So whatever his title is, it identifies payroll wise the same as hers.
And I am not trying to bite any words to get it.
No, no, no.
No.
What I'm saying is, there's two different, for Environmental Services Superintendent, on the front page, it's pay, pay scale from twenty-five thirty to twenty-six thirty, okay?
Right.
The second page, Environmental Services Superintendent is twenty bucks.
Why is that?
That's what I'm never. Well, I'm trying to figure out.
That's what she started at, but then you guys decided to move to department.
That's last year's.
I, I understand that, well, it's twenty twenty-four, but I understand that.
I just want to know where to put her.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, Environmental Services Superintendent, the second one shouldn't even be on there as far as, I mean.
See, I don't know if that's what she had started at and then she's decided it should be a department head.
You're up to business.
I, I don't know that there's a distinction between a department head and a superintendent. I mean, um, Linda was a superintendent. I mean, was it saying there, you know, about where Linda was? Um. Has it been budgeted?
No. I don't think so. Because we raised her like we would a department head for next year.
Yeah, thousand dollars more, thousand four, fifty cents an hour.
Let's see.
Two thousand.
She was at twenty-five.
Hey, are you anywhere near the courthouse again? Yep, why don't you run in for a quick?
Did we say Todd wasn't coming in today?
I guess he's not.
Didn't he have Todd counting today? Is that the day?
I think they, they had Todd count.
Not a call.
When he went and get done.
But he said if we needed it, we could.
Yeah. So I think we need to, when we get Scott back here, I think we need to, uh, get that determined.
Okay, Darlene was at twenty-five eighty, which was department head, and then for twenty.
Hello?
Five. Fourteen left. This was her mailbox.
Now, how did that, uh, did you have the dogs check it first?
Well, I'm low, but I shook it, so I think you're right. We had those for twenty-six eighty-three.
I'll text with Todd, see if he has time to phone call.
We've had, we've already raised it to twenty-sixteen three?
No, that's what she'll go to, almost what she'll go to this next paper. Because that was the raise on top of the department head pay. So I just need to, if I need classified as a superintendent and raises up more, it's going to cover some departments, or what you want to do?
We're, we're, we're not going to do that. You're saying four percent increase.
Okay, let me ask this, is that supposed to be with the increase on it? If it is, it keeps her under department heads.
That's a question, I, but he wouldn't.
But he has a pay scale for her and I didn't realize that.
That's not four percent.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, if we.
We'll ask, he'll be here, please, uh, uh, he'll be running. That's, that's a two percent, no, right at two percent.
Well, we budgeted twenty-six eighty-three for next year's budget, because we budgeted her as.
A four percent increase.
Right, as the department head issue was that.
Twenty-six eighty-three. Versus, that's twenty-six thirty.
Right, but that's an increase, so then he wants the four percent increase.
We would not have budgeted for that.
Yeah. And that should go to him.
Yeah. All right. We're going to close, should see, question, have any questions? Did you figure out what this statement was about ants?
Yes.
Ants, what's it?
It should say swap it out and they will pay.
Oh, I thought ants were going to pay.
Doesn't weird say, yeah.
Okay.
We're all about the expense. So I guess what we're seeing is she can either have a four percent or she can have this, but not both.
Yeah, I want to hear why this was filled out.
Okay.
Four percent would be more increase.
I'm going to have to run those to the fourth thing again, but I can leave this one, I'll show you.
Okay.
This is your.
Risk management, and that's what's left.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you go to risk management, it goes to us.
Ooh, yeah, what we're talking about here.
And we do have money, but as I said, if you can get one of these, I don't know whether it's showing you the four percent or the four percent.
Okay. Okay. How, how soon does the state kick that back from sales tax, you know, like retailers place remit the sales tax to on the twenty-fifth of the month, it goes to the state, how soon do they kick that back to the county?
It's like a month behind.
Okay. Hi, Todd.
That's not.
Are you driving?
No, it's not.
I always hate those days, huh? There we go. Do you have, uh, do you mind if I put you on speaker and, and we have a question for you? All right, all right, just a sec. All right, Todd, um.
Do we need to go into executive session for this?
Yeah, question, uh, has to do with, uh, matters of personnel, uh, so we're going to go into executive session to do this.
Okay, I move to go into executive session for purposes of personnel matters, non-elective personnel for a period of.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, uh, starting at, uh, started ten fifty-four for five minutes and reopen this location. Uh, clerk, attorneys, and the attorney and the commissioner.
And road bridge superintendent, public works director if he hits here.
Say.
Move the second all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye. And how we look? Your microphone's on.
Oh. Have a good Christmas, Todd.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, how do we?
There you go.
I'm all about you, let us all the time, so it's, they're going to get, uh, uh, I got jeans on.
Hey, there you go.
Way you got geared up.
Maybe we can.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just, uh, that's only what I see it is, you had to tell me, so.
Okay. Thank you, and so... You'll increase the twenty-twenty-four payroll, pay plan, and we'll each get a copy of it with everybody? Okay, because I, I don't...
Oh, I love you here, Sue, maybe you should do it.
Okay. So I didn't, I think that is, they didn't, after Christmas, uh...
Okay, so we put that to bed.
It was on solid.
We did on where to burn it.
Good. Anything else?
Can you leave anything?
You are free to go again, don't we call again? Which we won't, I don't think. Oh, I talked to, visiting Chris down there. We walked out there, visiting him a little bit about his situation down there. Uh, I think he came to the realization that maybe we need to check on something before we do anything else. So, um, you're going to do that, good. Yeah, so I think the majority of his operation is going to be running inside the city limits of the area. Okay?
Unfortunately.
But I told him, if he has questions in the future, he says the blade operator narrowed that road up. I said, but blade operator would shorten the two.
Right. Yeah, just FYI, Jerry Gate, operator down there, and his daughter, I guess she was in an accident when, at work. Haven't heard details, but apparently twenty percent of the body that burned, I don't know, a hundred percent right now.
How old was she?
I am not sure, she'd actually be working age.
Where did she work?
Again, I didn't have details, I heard that she got hurt at work, or she had a body.
Okay.
That's too bad.
I don't know how bad.
That's too bad.
Keep her in talks.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We'll do.
Thanks, yes.
Keep us up on what's going on there, because...
Yeah. Okay, entertain a motion to approve minutes from December twenty-three.
I still move, some changes.
Correct. Move the second of the day. Move the second to approve the twenty, December twenty-third minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those say aye.
All right.
And with that, here's something off the agenda. And by the way, no action taken outside of executive session. Took care of the, there's going to be a letter sent to the landowners, or resolution. Know what day everybody keeps going, yeah? Commander, you got eight o'clock, it's Monday.
Yes.
Bring the pen. This is the B and G stuff that was it on the first one.
This is the B and G stuff that was out on Christmas.
All right, go ahead.
That's like, we received before Christmas, it's just like a Christmas...
Card?
Yeah, so more recycled.
Okay. I don't see any... I don't have any other notes, mark me anything.
I can't pick anything, though.
Okay, all right. Kristen? You've been motion to adjourn?
So move the second feature.
Yeah, he did.
Move way after the adjournment.
Thank you for that.
Aye.
All of those things, all right.
Aye. All right.
I would leave this with you guys, but it was a gift from my sister years ago that, uh, she knows I'm a big fan.
Go ahead.
So I'm living here.
Take it with you.
Go on, too.
I'm good, new you.
Bye.
You too, see you later.